So I will call us to order and I will start with telling everyone that this meeting is being streamed live on the internet and the public has been given notice through the Herald Citizen newspaper and on the board's webpage of when and where to access the live stream. The board is streaming its proceedings live to ensure that the requirements of Tennessee's Open Meetings Act are met. To minimize background noise, please mute your microphones when not speaking. So Madam Secretary, I think you have an announcement to make.
And now I need to call the order, call the roll call first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll call us to order and if you'll give us a roll call, that'd be great.
Hilliard?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Lowry?
Here.
Fardeh?
Here.
Rose?
Here.
Cigardi?
Here.
Stein? Ben Hoosier?
Here.
Willmore?
Here.
Harper?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum, but quorum of members is not physically present. In order to proceed with the action items, the board must make a determination of necessity for proceeding without a quorum physically present.
Okay, and I think you are familiar with this, but let me just say for the record pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Section 8-44-108B3, if a physical quorum is not present at the location of a meeting of a governing body, then in order for a quorum of members to participate by electronic or other means of communication, the governing body must make a determination that a necessity exists. So let me tell you the facts and circumstances that necessitate a meeting without a quorum physically present today. First, the board is required to consider several important and time-sensitive matters, including but not limited to emergency rules, tenure recommendations, and the budget. Number two, the board is meeting via teleconference in recognition of the need to act on these important matters in recognition of the need to limit personal contact during the COVID-19 pandemic and in keeping with Executive Order 38 related to the pandemic. These facts and circumstances necessitate a meeting without a quorum physically present. Do I, I would entertain a motion from a board member to determine that a necessity exists to allow board members to participate by electronic means.
Based on the fact?
Second.
Thank you. I believe we had a motion from Teresa Van Hoosier and a second from Mason Hilliard. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Lowry?
Yeah, yes.
Fardeh?
Aye.
Rose?
Aye.
Cigardi?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Ben Hoosier?
Aye.
Willmore?
Aye.
Harper?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. That motion carries. And I'll just remind everyone to please keep their microphones on mute if they're not speaking. So in keeping with our normal, even though this isn't a very normal meeting since we're doing it by phone, but in keeping with our traditional protocol, we are, and to keep us focused on what we're here for, we have two this time, groups that we want to spotlight of faculty and students. And I'm going to start with the first group and I'm going to read some of this and then I know we're going to have a little presentation from Dr. Fadon and his group. But Dr. Ismail Fadon, professor in the Department of Manufacturing and Engineering Technology, recruited a workforce of graduate and undergraduate students and led them in creating several hundred face masks and shields for healthcare workers and first responders at the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic using the latest 3D printing technology. His work with 3D printing has gained him an international recognition as well as the 2020 Kaplerner Faculty Research Award, which is Tech's highest faculty honor. Dr. Fadon, would you address the board, please?
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving us the time to present our works this afternoon. As a team, we heavily worked in March, April, and May and our initial task was to print the headbands for the delivery to T-HAC location at Austin P. In March, we submitted 920 headbands to this location in two shipments. In April, our production was fully for local needs. We kept printing headbands, but we needed to have plastic shields for face coverage and elastic bands for holding the whole assembly. Almost 1,500 plastic press shields were donated to us by George Johnson Marketing Company located in Nashville. They were picked up by our associate Dean Waheed Mutawali. And all the elastic bands were provided by our Dean Joe Slater to our team. Let me give you some bulk numbers on our deliveries. We had given 350 full-assembled face shields to Cookeville Regional Medical Center, 50 full-assembled face shields to Cookeville Fire Department, 80 face shields to City of Cookeville, 300 face shields to Potomac County Emergency Medical Services, 50 Cookeville Regional Medical Centers to Medical Centers, Cancer Center, and 100 to Tennessee Tech's Health Services. And at this time, we have 450 of them ready for a delivery, but we are waiting for a green light from Lee Ray. In the last three years, also Tennessee Tech established an additive manufacturing hub, which we call it additive manufacturing workforce advancement training coalition and hub, which is almost a million dollar funding from the federal government. We were able to train almost 50 STEM educators on the latest trends and technologies of additive manufacturing and give one 3D printer to each attendee in our two-day workshops. During this challenging time, some of the trained educators also helped us and printed the headbands for this difficult time. For our production, we used the following Tennessee Tech labs and facilities and all the students that I mentioned to you work voluntary without any single penny compensation. Foundation Hall 3D Printing Lab, Kyle Wendt, Ankit Gupta, and Seymour Hasano. Brown Hall Capstone Lab, Zicheng Zen, and Hao Lu. Lewis Hall 3D Printing Lab, Mehdi Mohammed Zadeh. I-Maker Space, Hunter Hinshaw. I personally want to thank our students, Dean Slater and Dr. Mutawali, since they did their best for us at this difficult time with a closed campus to work on this project and produce very impactful outcomes at these difficult times of the century. I have five or six students attending today. If Kyle is available there, he can make a very short statement too. Kyle, are you ready?
Yes, sir, I'm here. My name's Kyle Wendt and I have done research with Dr. Fadon for several years now, beginning in high school and it's, I've kept my contact with him and done more projects with him throughout my college career. I just completed my sophomore year and when the coronavirus pandemic began, things started getting bad pretty quick and over spring break, Dr. Fadon called me and it was an emergency response and he needed me to come in and help post-process and maintain the 3D printers and print the headbands that we were producing. And I think with over 2,000 produced, I like to think to myself that hopefully we saved at least one person's life and I think that it was just a really great thing for Tech to come together. I know that we had Foundation Hall Printing, we had Brown Hall, the Maker Space, the STEM Center where I work, that's where I am right now. We had all of our printers running day and night everywhere across campus and we did something great for the state of Tennessee and everybody on the front lines of this situation going on and I'm very grateful to be a part of it and I want to thank Dr. Fadon for inviting me onto it.
Well, I can speak for the board when I say Kyle and Dr. Fadon that I am confident you save lives and I think about how each of us have wished we could do something to help during this time and I think we've, I for one have felt powerless and I think many of us have and yet you guys took what you have and turned that into something very powerful and very important. And I can't imagine the lives you've saved and we'll never really know that, but we know it has happened. I also will tell you that as a, on a personal note, I've had two or three calls and notes from people saying, aren't you involved with Tennessee Tech? I read that they're printing 3D printing masks. And so that's great advertising and great publicity for the university as well. So I'll open it up to the board if anybody has anything else they want to say or ask.
Trudy, I think Professor Fadon and Kyle lead around with applause more. Well done, guys. Thank you.
I'm so proud to be associated with you all. Anything else? That was a great idea, Perna. All right. Well, thank you both and you may want to stay and listen because we have another spotlight on student success. Oh, Sally even added an applause to her profile or whatever that is. I don't know how you do that, so I'm sorry. I don't know how to do that. But anyway, we have a second because we have so much going on at this university, even with it closed, we have so much going on. I want to now welcome Kinsey Potter and Kesther Newcomb, who represent Tech's Generation R, students who are passionate about Rural Reimagined, the grand challenge created by the university to follow Governor Bill Lee's directive to accelerate service to rural communities. Kinsey and Kesther are the energy behind the Gen R Club and Gen R ambassadors. They provide inspiration, information, and leadership to the Grand Challenge community. That committee, excuse me, to the Grand Challenge Committee, that committee is hard at work integrating rural assistance into the academic and service components of the university. So Kinsey and Kesther, we look forward to hearing from you all now. Soon you know which one maybe is going to speak first, but feel free to take over.
Well, thank you so much. Yes, we are planners, so we did have this a little planned out today. But hello, everyone. My name is Kinsey Potter and I'm currently the Graduate Assistant for Rural Reimagine and I'm really thankful for the opportunity to be here today and represent Rural Reimagine to you all. I actually got involved with Rural Reimagine soon after its implementation in March 2019 when I was earning my bachelor's at Tech and now I'm currently, they're so kind to give me a graduate assistantship while I earn my PhD and masters. So the Grand Challenge is a really awesome thing and we wanted to bring it up today simply because of the amazing accomplishments that we have actually been able to do in the past year and a half. We've just grown exponentially, but more importantly, we've gotten a lot of student involvement and Kesther Newcomb will actually introduce himself in a minute and speak more about the amazing students we have with Rural Reimagine. But I would just like to start to give a brief overview of Rural Reimagine in particular as we are known as Gen R, Rural Reimagined, and the Grand Challenge. I'm just going to give a little background on that. So Rural Reimagine was implemented in March 2019 as Tennessee Tech's Grand Challenge Initiative. And a grand challenge is usually a challenge that a university or institution seeks to solve a problem. And considering that Tennessee Tech is actually surrounded by seven of the distressed counties in the upper Cumberland who face problems such as clean water, food, and energy, the opioid crisis, access to healthcare and STEM education, among others, we decided it would be a wonderful thing to have Rural Reimagine as a grand challenge and a needed initiative and it actually ended up coinciding perfectly with Governor Bill Lee's first executive motion to serve rural communities. So the Grand Challenge realizes that many distressed rural communities face these problems and our university hopes that Rural Reimagine can make an impact to improve rural living through our innovation, science, harnessing technology, and entrepreneurship and our university resources. And I'm proud to share with you today that in the past year and a half, we have surprisingly made a lot of impacts. We have actually had over 3,000 interactions within the community and within the university, including 2,000 student interactions, over 50 faculty interactions, 30 partnerships ranging from libraries to school systems, to healthcare systems, the Ram Clinic, the Upper Cumberland Development District, the Small Development Business District Center, and the Biz Foundry, and many others, and we have over 80 continuing projects with those. And so with that, we are continuing to make a difference in our surrounding rural communities through implementing student internships, co-curricular experiences, rural-based research and courses, faculty-based rural research and grant proposals, and also utilizing our centers and educational outreach and actually sending the students and faculty to teach things like healthcare and STEM education through utilizing centers like the STEM Center, the Water Center, and also really importantly, our agricultural resources such as to help solve problems in the nexus of food, water, and energy. And additionally, we're also leveraging all of our entrepreneurial resources like the Center for Rural Innovation to help local businesses recover from the impact and injury of COVID-19. With all of that said, in a little over one year, we've created many partnerships, developed rural-focused research and grant proposals, but most importantly, in my opinion, inspired our university family to really recognize and appreciate the beautiful rural communities that surround our university and that we call home. And I see a humongous, wonderfully future ahead for Grand Challenge and that's why I'm just so excited and passionate about it. But one of our biggest strengths that I would like to say we have is our wonderful students of Tennessee Tech. And with that being said, I'm going to hand it over to Kesther Newcomb, who you will love a lot and he's going to tell you a lot about the students and the future of the students at Tech as well as what the students have done to help us accomplish what we have so far. Thank you.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Kesther Newcomb and first of all, it is just an honor to be speaking in front of you today. I'm currently just a rising sophomore majoring in computer engineering and I serve as the president of the Rural Reimagine Club as well as the undergraduate student representative on the Grand Challenge Committee. That's a little bit about how I got involved in Rural Reimagine because I am currently pursuing a research civic engagement project regarding rural engineering education under Dr. J.W. Bruce in the ECE Department as well as part of the Honors Engagement Fellowship just established this past year. And in short, on the research side, I'm analyzing data to investigate the trends behind why there aren't as many students going from rural communities going into engineering. And on the civic engagement side, my goal is to create some sort of engineering outreach program for rural K-12 students to be more exposed and engaged with engineering. And throughout the summer, I've already spoken with 27 educators across 17 counties across the state, including some major stakeholders as well, to identify needs and opportunities for a potential engineering outreach program. I would have never imagined myself being involved in Rural Reimagine when I just entered Tech just a year ago, but through the Grand Challenge, I have found a greater passion for, to serve rural communities, especially through engineering research and STEM education advocacy and through the Rural Reimagine Club as well. So about the Rural Reimagine Club, we have about 30 members, including those from our partner student organizations, I Care and the Ram Clinic. Our members are very diverse and we come from a variety of backgrounds, a variety of departments across campus and a variety of communities and rural counties across the state. As of last semester, we have performed two rural-focused service projects. We are a rural, we are a service organization. And so the first project, which was headed by Dr. Jeremy Blair in the College of Fine Arts, was for a display case in the Bull Pea Library that represents rural issues and communities. And we've already curated a list of dozens of books and we're ready to assemble the display once we return to Tech in the fall. The second project, inspired by Associate Dean of Education, Dr. Julie Baker, was an education public service announcement. The aim of our PSA is to inspire students in rural areas to pursue careers in teaching since many communities around the state and around the nation and very rural areas face dramatic teacher shortages. And one of the solutions is to get students from those areas to come back and teach their future generations. We have collected already 21 videos from Tech students representing 13 counties and not all nine colleges on campus, in which they talk about a teacher who has made a deep impact on them. We are currently working on editing these videos together to create a final product to publish. Right now, we are in the planning process for the upcoming school year to further promote the club and the Grand Challenge to more students, especially our incoming freshmen. As I like to put it, I want to start hitting the round running once classes start in August. And actually, one of our ideas that we're heavily leaning on for our next service project next semester is to partner with Rugby Tennessee. It's a historic village in the border of Morgan and Scott Counties. And from what I've heard, it's really nice and we want to help promote travel tourism and research at the site. Rural Reimagine is also in the works of establishing new webpages, each directed towards students, faculty, and community partners so that they're more informed of what we offer to students and what we're doing in the community as well as expand our online social media presence. So please go follow us on Facebook and Instagram if you have the chance. And so the Rural Reimagine Club, as I like to put it, we're paving the way for new precedents being created on Tennessee Tech's campus. The first part of like the vision I've had for the past, for the upcoming school year is that we're providing a new model for cross-organization collaboration and partnerships around campus. The, how I view Rural Reimagine, we want to be a unifying force to unite students from all majors, from all departments to go and serve these, our communities. So in addition to Ram and I Care, we've already partnered with TAB to help promote both organizations at various tech events. And we've already garnered interest from campus life as well as Rotary Act and mortar board for possible partnerships in our service projects next year. And we hope that these partnerships will unite students and organizations under the Grand Challenge and even though they may not be a members of their club, they're still being able to participate in this amazing mission. We also plan to encourage as much student involvement and leadership as possible through the club and through other outlets as well. We are in the process of creating a new structure for a new Rural Reimagine Ambassador's Program for highly motivated student leaders to, you know, spread what the Grand Challenge means, not on campus and all throughout the community. We also plan to encourage students inside and outside the clubs to further serve rural communities by pursuing their own individual research, civic engagement, and entrepreneurial projects that combine their interests, skills, and abilities, especially through things, the Eagle Works competitions or just through encouraging, getting, connecting students with faculty pursuing rural research. And so I can say without a doubt that as we continue planning this summer, the future of Rural Reimagine looks very bright. And on behalf of all the students and faculty involved in Rural Reimagine and Generation R, thank you so much for your support of the Grand Challenge and our mission, Tech's mission, to positively transform rural communities, not only in our backyard of the upper Cumberland, but I'd say we could do it around the nation as well. And, you know, at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about Rural Reimagine. Thank you.
Thank you, Kesther and Kinsey. That's a, that's quite a presentation. It sounds like you guys are making great use of the time while the university's closed to get an awful lot of good things done. Does anyone have any questions for Kesther and/or Kinsey? Well, thank you both very much. And Kesther, I teach in your department, so maybe in a year or so, I'll, if I'm still teaching, I'll be, I'll have you as a student. Thank you all very much and thanks as always to the students and to the, to the administration for making the students available to us. Everybody's giving you applause. Terrific. Great job, you guys. Ms. Carpenter, do we need to stop, do we need to step back and let you ask some administrative questions?
Yes, and again, my apologies for having overlooked this at the beginning when I did the roll call vote. I need to confirm that the board members can simultaneously hear and speak to each other. If there, anyone has any concern or is having any problem, please let me know. I'm looking and it appears we are all okay. If at any time you are having trouble, please text or chat if necessary. Would, would board members identify any persons present in the location from which they are calling in or sitting in? And specifically, Mr. Stein, I am, I believe you are, might have, might want to identify individuals?
Yes, I have Dr. Stinson in here with me and Rebecca Smith.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have anyone present in their location? Yeah, all right. And would everyone, is there anyone who did not receive the board materials in advance of the meeting? Please identify yourself if you did not receive board materials. They were in the diligent book. I believe everyone has received them. All right, thank you. And again, my apologies for having missed that.
That's just fine. Thank you. So we have just, we have a number of administrative things to handle today and all of them are very important and then of course, we have some really major business to come, to cover as well. But one of the important administrative things we have to address today, both positive and negative, is that we have a changing of the guard at the Faculty Senate leadership and I want to first congratulate Dr. Holly Stratz, who is on the phone today with us, Wave Holly. There she is. Dr. Holly Stratz is from the Chemical Engineering Department and she is going to be the, she's the incoming chairman of the Faculty Senate, so congratulations to you. We look forward to a, to a positive year of working with you. And Dr. Smith Andrews, I think you're on the phone. There you are. I actually wrote a few notes and I want to, I want to say this to you because you've been a tremendous Faculty Senate President. When you took over as Faculty Senate President, you had some big shoes to fill. You were following Dr. Kilman, who was president when this board was formed and who had the thankless and daunting job of helping this board understand its new role. And then Dr. Smith, who worked tirelessly and patiently to help each of us on the board understand the role of the Faculty Senate in this enterprise that we call Tennessee Tech. Your leadership, Dr. Smith Andrews, has propagated that legacy and you've added your own unique values as you have worked to ensure that the trustees and the board, excuse me, the trustees and the Faculty Senate are speaking the same language and you've embraced and embodied the idea that we are all working toward the same goal. You've always been direct and candid and you've also always been thoughtful and kind. On a personal note, you've been an excellent mentor for me as you assured me that an online platform for education could be very effective and you were right. This university, this board, and your students are very blessed to have you on the faculty of Tennessee Tech and we want to thank you for your leadership and vision for the Faculty Senate. So can I get a round of applause for Dr. Smith Andrews? You can't hear it. We're clapping for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you and we're going to miss you. So then our first order of business on the agenda is the approval of minutes. And so hopefully you've all received the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review those? And if so, I would entertain a motion to accept them or, accept them as is or any proposed changes.
So moved?
Moved as, as submitted, Perna?
Yes, thank you.
Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Lowry, seconds. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote, okay. Jones?
Aye.
Lowry?
Aye.
Fardeh?
Aye.
Rose?
Aye.
Cigardi?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Ben Hoosier?
Aye.
Willmore?
Aye.
Harper?
Aye.
Nine ayes. I'm afraid I will always say, is there any discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Because I grew up in the Baptist church where we would say, "All in favor of this person becoming a member, say amen." All opposed, of course, there are none. That's how we always. So we now have another very important matter of business to come before us. We have an election of our student trustee. And again, you're going to be having big shoes to fill and we'll talk about Mason a little bit later in the meeting. But, but Mason, if you're not right, that you're going to have to be stepping down. But we have, we're excited to hear from three candidates. So let me just give you a little bit of background. The Focus Act requires the board to select a student as a non-voting member. Tennessee Tech Student Government Association developed a process for selecting candidates to present to the board for consideration. The requirements established by the Student Government Association, a candidate for the trustee position cannot contemporaneously serve as an executive SGA officer. Candidates selected by the SGA are in Alph... Candidates selected by the SGA are in alphabetical order, and we will hear from each of these three, Daniel Hines, Jackson Hale, and Tristan Pope. Jackson Lell, I think I misspoke, sorry, Tristan Pope. So I, we've asked each of these individuals to give us a short elevator speech. So we're going to start with Mr. Hines. So Mr. Hines, if you would give us, I don't see Mr. Hines, but I assume he's going to pop up when he starts to speak.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Yes, thank you.
Well, good afternoon, Board of Trustees members, President Oldham. My name is Daniel Hines, and I'm a rising senior studying cellular and molecular biology. Upon serving the past three years in the Student Government Association, and most recently as a president's ambassador, I was introduced to this position as a student representative on the board. As a part of the Student Government Association, I have been appointed to numerous university committees, including the Business and Grounds Committee, Chapter 606, and served as the Chair of the Student Affairs Committee. Back in 2017, I applied for a position as a student orientation assistant and was selected to be a part of the 2018 team. Little did I know what this opportunity would do for me. Being selected helped me form a bond with and pride for this university like no other. I was able to interact with incoming students and share my love and passion for the university and what opportunities it had to offer. Upon serving on the 2018 team, I became a student coordinator for the Office of New Student and Family Programs, leading to even more opportunities to serve the university, including a position on the Tennessee Tech Parent Association Board. These ongoing leadership roles, among others, have allowed me to meet students, faculty, and administration, and hear their perspective on different aspects of their personal lives and their roles at the university. Serving in these broad capacities of our campus has helped me gain a better picture of the many aspects that make Tennessee Tech what it is. I wish to serve as a student representative on the board because I believe I bring a diverse and well-rounded perspective that can represent the student population as a whole. It would be an honor to serve Tennessee Tech in this way and to give back to a university that has given me so much: a quality education, teamwork skills, reliability, and dependability traits, leadership skills, and most important, most importantly, the capacity for improvement in every aspect of my life. But what better these traits if there are no opportunities to exercise them? But Tennessee Tech has given me the ability to apply these traits in a manner that impacts not only my fellow students at Tennessee Tech, but me in my own life. Thank you all for everything that you do as a board and for the university and the students here, and I would very much appreciate your consideration for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. And let me just ask everyone, please to mute their mics. If you haven't muted your mic, you may not realize you haven't, but take a look and make sure you're, you have that little red microphone in the bottom left-hand corner of your screen. Mr. Hines, that was exceptional. Thank you. Mr. Lell, I think you're up next, so I'll mute my mic and I'll let you speak.
And I do apologize for my less than professional appearance. I've been doing mission work all week, and when I got the email about this call, I'd already planned to be doing food delivery and landscaping. So again, I do apologize that I'm not looking very professional. My name is Jackson Lilly. I'm a rising senior studying criminal justice with minors in psychology and political science. After graduation, I plan to work for the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation and then run for United States Senate. It took me about 15 seconds to realize that I wanted to be a Golden Eagle. I stepped on campus for Boise State and immediately knew that this was home for me. In fact, I'd actually already accepted, or excuse me, already been accepted with a full ride to Lee University in Cleveland, and I called my admissions counselor that afternoon and told them that I, I did not feel right about going there anymore and transferring everything over to Tennessee Tech. And I believe that should be the same for everyone. I believe that tech is a family. It's not just a university. Anywhere you go, you can find a way to fit in, and I believe that we need to harbor that and continue to grow that so that every student who sets foot on our beautiful campus will know that they are, they belong there and that they are welcome. About working with people, especially to improve the things around me, I'm always looking for ways to help people feel welcome and feel appreciated and know that they are right where they're supposed to be. And I believe that I will be able to do that by working with you all and with, working with everyone else on the university's campus. I actually found out about this position through Mason. He was my Boise State counselor. We're talking with him when I'm back here. I learned of this position. I'm so sorry, I did not realize it was beginning right now. But I just, I do believe that I am very well-equipped with communication skills and the ability to work together with people so that I can be able to get things done for this university. I really appreciate y'all giving me the chance to interview with you guys, and if you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask. I'd love to get to know y'all in a much deeper level. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lellie. I'm sorry, I was mispronouncing your name. And I, and just one more time, I'm going to ask everyone to mute their mics, and now we'll have Tristan Pope. I believe it's Mr. Pope. Is Mr. Pope?
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tristan Pope, and I just want to start out by thanking all of y'all for all you do and just giving me this opportunity. I am from rural Smith County and a first-generation college student, and it's a privilege just to have this opportunity. I'm majoring in agricultural education, where I plan to use my degree to go to high school and become a high school act teacher. With being a first-generation college student, Tennessee Tech has truly been a life-changing experience. I have enjoyed all of my time at Tech. With my time at Tech, I've had numerous opportunities to grow both academically and professionally. These include serving with the Student Government Association for two years, where I have served by representing the College of Agriculture and Human Ecology. Through SGA, I have also had opportunities to serve on numerous committees. These include the Course Scheduling Committee and the Student Success Center Implementation Committee. With addition of these committees, I have also had the honor to serve on the Provost's Advisory Council and serve as a president's ambassador. With having these opportunities and being active in many different clubs and organizations across campus, I've had a chance to interact with many faculty, staff, and students. This experience has given me a chance to see just how much of an impact Tennessee Tech has, not only on the students, but the upper Cumberland region and the state. Being a student at Tennessee Tech has not only prepared me academically, but this university has allowed me to gain both leadership and social skills. With this position, I believe I will be able to apply these skills to better serve and represent not only the students, but Tennessee Tech as a whole. This opportunity will be an example that even a first-generation college student can be successful with hard work and dedication. Tennessee Tech changes lives for the best, and it has truly changed mine. I would be honored to be selected as the new student trustee and to be able to give back to a university that has given so much to me. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thanks to you, Mr. Pope, but thanks to all three of you. Those were exceptional speeches, and any one of you I know would be an exceptional trustee, and I wish we could have all three of you, obviously. I wish we could have all the people who have spoken today sit at our board table every time. But we can only have one, and so now it's up to the board, and I need a nomination from a board member for one of these candidates, please. I think Jones has his hand up. I don't know, is that right, Mr. Jones?
You know, I just want to say to all three candidates, I think I spent more time reading your resumes than I did probably any, any of the other board material because they're tough choices, and you're all three incredibly qualified. One of the things I appreciated most, I think, on the questionnaire was when you documented the issues that you thought were important to this campus. And for me personally, that, again, it's a slim margin of defining who I would nominate, but at this time, I would like to nominate Daniel Hines to be our Student Representative Board of Trustees, and I would certainly like to hear from other board members if they want to comment, but that would be my nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I would just, I would just comment to say that I totally agree with Tom's comments around the caliber of student and the caliber of submission and the way you've all represented yourself, and not just you, but the other students as well, but it makes me proud to be a board member and to be an alum, and all of you have great capabilities and great futures. If there's a requirement for a second, or Chair, I would like to second Daniel, Daniel Hines.
That'd be terrific. Thank you, Mr. Lowery. Do any other board members have anything to offer?
This is Johnny Stides. I agree with the other two board members. We're very blessed to have three great candidates here, and I think each one of them brings a unique perspective to our board. I'd really like to see us nominate Jackson Lellie.
So we've had one nomination, and Carpenter, I'm sorry, did you want to say something, Mason?
I did. I just wanted to commend each student for, for, you know, telling us why they wanted to be on the board, understand how nerve-wracking it could be and how important it is, and I'm glad that I, you know, didn't have to go up against them last year because they're all very qualified and they'll do wonderful jobs. So I commend all of you, and I'm glad that I don't have to make the decision. So congratulations to all of you.
You're right. You don't get to vote on this one, and you don't have to vote on this one. That's hard. Ms. Carpenter, since we've had two nominations, I don't know whether I need to act on the first nomination.
There is a motion in a second, so there should be further discussion and action on the motion, either to table it or to vote it.
I'm sorry, I think I cut you off at the beginning. Can you say that again?
Yeah, there is a motion in a second, and so that matter needs to be taken up or tabled.
Okay, so we will act then on Mr. Jones' nomination and Mr. Lowery's second for Mr. Hines, and then depending on where we go with that, then we can take up a second motion if we need to. Is there discussion? And this would be, Johnny, I think where you have offered obviously a different option, and we appreciate that, and I actually think all three candidates are excellent, so I don't think there'd be any reason to. But is there any further?
Trudy, just very briefly, this is really, really difficult. We have not had the opportunity to get face-to-face and shake these gentlemen's hands and discuss and just have a banter with them, and to read, like, like Tom said, to read through their bios, they are all outstanding, to listen to them speak, they've all done a wonderful job, they've conveyed their thoughts very eloquently, as you noted. It is really, really tough. I tell you, I could vote yes, positive to every one of these three individuals, and it would be, and I would be, feel very comfortable doing so. So with the, you know, with the restrictions we have with this COVID and the way we're having to do this, this is not optimal, and to each of y'all, two of you will not be on the board, one of you will, and the two that are not, I just want to say that, as has already been said, you're equally qualified, and you, and any, and the situation being different, it might have been you on the board, vice the one that we select. So I just want to say that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Willmore. You were just addressed by an astronaut, gentlemen. Are there other comments on the, on the motion that's been made, which is to nominate Daniel Hines? Hearing no further comments, we will take a vote on this nomination.
I do want to add one comment, Trudy. Just to reiterate, I, again, I do think they're all outstanding, but I really appreciated Daniel Hines' comments specifically about diversity, and, and this is why I, I wanted to nominate him, because I think that is one of the critical issues, especially at these times on our campus. And, and that was, to me, the defining thing. I know I said it before, but I wanted to make it more clear. So that, that's my vote.
Thank you. These are all, just all excellent discussion. Is there any further discussion? This is such an important vote we'll be taking.
Hey, Trudy, this is Radonna. I might add to excellent, excellent candidates, and like Mr. Jones, I enjoyed reading your all's resumes that you turned in. I liked hearing what you had to say. I do wish we had more time to get to ask you some questions and get to engage with you one-on-one, but all excellent, and I give a shout-out to all of you. And Tristan, I'm especially proud to see somebody that has as high of a GPA as you have, and you want to go back and be a teacher and pass that on to future generations, and makes me think about the Krista McCullough quote about never knowing how far your, your impact goes when, when you teach, because you always touch the future, and I think that is just wonderful, but a great group, and so glad that y'all are running, and I hope I get to talk to all of you in person at some point.
Thank you, Radonna, and I, I feel required to say, I'm also a first-generation college student, Mr. Pope, and so I, I give you a thumbs up for that as well. Okay, are there other comments from the board members on the motion in front of us, which is to nominate Daniel Hines? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote on the nomination for Daniel Hines. Jones?
Aye.
Lowery?
Aye.
Pardue?
Aye.
Rose?
Aye.
Sigurdi?
Aye.
Stides?
Aye.
Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Willmore?
Torn. Like I said, I'm going to vote no, not against Mr. Hines. Daniel, I'm not voting against you, but I think that I have a vote for someone else that I would give, and it's not based on anything other than, like I said, just a little bit of interaction we've had and what we, what we read, so I'll say that.
Harper?
Aye.
All right, so I heard eight ayes and one nay.
So I believe that motion carries, and Mr. Hines, I believe you will be our next student trustee. And Mr. Lellie and Mr. Pope, I can't emphasize enough how grateful we are to you for leaning into this and taking the chance to be part of this process. That, you put yourself out there, and it is tough to do that. None of us had to do that, just for the record. We all got picked, and so you all had to put yourself out there, and that's what leads to success in your life, and I just so want your parents to know they've raised good, good boys. Thank you both very much, and congratulations to Mr. Hines. I'm sorry, was somebody saying something?
Well done. Really good presentations, really good representations.
These, these were tremendous, and, and I appreciate whether it was the SGA or the administration who put together the platform that, that made their resumes consistent, that, at least a consistent comparison. I thought that was very helpful as well. All right, well, thank you very much to all of you, and this is a bittersweet time, obviously, so, but Mr. Hines, we look very forward to working with you. And Mr. Hilliard, you don't get to go very far, as I understand. We're going to be talking about you later in the meeting, but, but thanks to all of you.
Thank you all.
I'm going to move on, as much as I hate to, I'm going to move on. Before we get to the president's report, which is a really critical part of this meeting, I want you to know that shortly after this meeting, I think tomorrow or within the next few days, Deb Combs will be sending an email about accessing and completing the assessment questionnaire for the president's evaluation. The questionnaire will be available, available in diligent, and I ask you to respond to that completely and thoroughly and thoughtfully and quickly, at least within the timeframe that you're given. You certainly don't have to do it any sooner than that, but I, I don't remember if I've reported this or not, but Ms. Van Hoosier has agreed to be the executive committee representative in this cycle of the president's review, so Teresa will be receiving your, your responses to the questionnaire, and I know she will appreciate your prompt attention, attention to that. So, Mr. President, I think you, we've heard a lot of great stuff from this university today. You must be doing something right. I'm going to shut up and let you tell us about it.
Thank you, Chairman Harper, and good afternoon to everyone. Like most of you, my response is just, wow, it's incredible to be back and listen to these wonderful students, and I think in the future, maybe I'll recommend that they just give my report instead of me. I think they could do a much better job, and they represent us so incredibly well. So congratulations to all of them. I want to, I want to thank all them, Kyle, Kinsey, Kestor, Daniel, Jackson, and Tristan. Great job, all of you. And Daniel, congratulations to you on your election. I know you'll do a great job. And I know we'll get a chance to say thank you and congratulations to Mason. And Daniel, congratulations to you on your election. I know you'll do a great job. And I know we'll get a chance to say thank you and congratulations to Mason before the, the afternoon is over. But great job, Mason, this year. Congratulations to you as well. Again, that's why we're here. That's why we're all assembled today. That's why those of us that work here at Tennessee Tech on a daily basis, that's why we're here, because of the students. And everything that we do, everything that we think about revolves around what's best for their, them and what's in their best interests. And so I'm, I'm really delighted that the board gets to see the incredible value that these students bring to our university and to the, to the world they live in. So it makes our job so much easier. Appreciate them so much. So I've got a, a number of things to go through here. I'll try to do it fairly expeditiously. And, and I'll certainly leave time for questions if you have any. But to say that it's been a, these last few months would be a drastic understatement. There's been a lot going on, as I reported in committee earlier this morning. But let me hit on things here to, to bring everybody up to date. One thing that's on the forefront right now, and it, and as it should be, and that's, that's our continued emphasis on diversity on the university campus. And certainly it's in our hearts and minds now more than ever with the recent events nationally and, and so prevalent in national media. It's brought it even more so to our attention and, and, and made sure that we're paying attention. So to give you an idea about how we've been responding in the last few days and weeks, pretty quickly, I put out a personal statement regarding recent events on social media. We also followed up with an official statement on behalf of the university regarding the, the recent events involving racial tension. I've met once already with a group of black students, a wonderful group of black students. We had a great conversation. We have another one scheduled for this Thursday, a follow-up conversation. And I, I intend for this to be an ongoing dialogue. And they're helping me a lot, helping me understand their experiences and situations and as we shape the future of the university. I've also met with a wonderful group of black faculty and staff this past week that was another wonderful experience and, and really gave them an opportunity to share with me in a very safe way what their experiences are like here at Tennessee Tech. And they're very, they're very candid. They're very honest. They're wonderful people. And sometimes their experiences are not what they should be. And it, it draws us all, I think, to the conclusion that we've got to do more, we've got to do better. And, and that's where, that's where we're headed. I've instructed all the vice presidents on the cabinet to hold similar meetings with their faculty and staff and their divisions to, to really expand this conversation across the entire campus in a way that's most beneficial and safest for everyone. We will continue to explore ways to, to expand this conversation so that we all learn from each other and we all benefit from those shared experiences and sometimes different experiences that we might have. And so that, you know, we really begin to move the culture in a positive way on campus. And I appreciate everybody contributing to that. So we are committed to not only having a diverse campus, a diverse university, but also standing up for the rights and protections of all members of the Tennessee Tech community. And we will continue to double our efforts in those regards. And so we've got some work to do, but we're off to a good start. There is continued progress. And even with the challenges that we faced with the, the shutdown, the transition to online learning in the spring, budgetary restrictions based on economic shutdowns across the state, and, and quite honestly, uncertainty regarding future financial support as well as enrollments, not knowing exactly what enrollment might look like in the fall. We remain absolutely committed to having students back on campus in a safe and healthy manner in August. And we're making all modifications and preparations to ensure that that's done successfully. But that progress continues. And when I was preparing for this, I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. When I was preparing for this presentation, I, bear with me here, I'm having to do my own IT work. When I was preparing for this, it reminded me of a couple of quotes or sayings that you're probably familiar with. One of which is, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And I think we would all agree with that. I've spoken to this board on a number of occasions over the past three years regarding strategic planning and the importance of strategic planning. However, it's at times like this that you often look at the second statement, which is life is what happens while you're making other plans. And that's sort of what's happened to us over the last few months as we've, as we've continued to make wonderful progress in our strategic plan and implementation of that plan. You know, a, a, a worldwide pandemic happened. A, or an EF4 tornado hit Putnam County. Racial tension re arose in, here in this country and in the region. This is what life is all about. It doesn't, it doesn't negate the fact that strategic planning is important. In fact, if anything, it points to how important that strategic planning is. In fact, the, the fact that we have been able to do such good work in strategic planning and implementation really continues to point us toward the future and keep us focused on the things that are most important. So as we, as we move forward in the future, we're going to use that strategic plan to continue to guide us and shape us. And so even now with the challenges that we have around some uncertainty in our future, we know what to look for. And I greatly appreciate the, the faculty that have helped lead the strategic planning effort because their work is really paying off for us at this time. So in terms of budgetary matters that we're currently dealing with, we have seen a decrease in the amount of state support that we had expected for this year. And we're having to make some necessary adjustments, as has been noted in the previous committee this morning. We've lost some maintenance dollars that we had intended to deploy on campus. And so again, we're making some adjustments. It doesn't dissuade us from our goals, however. Our goals remain the same and, and our progress has to maintain momentum. So there's a few steps that haven't been mentioned earlier today that I want to make sure is really clear. One of which is that we remain completely fixed in our expectation to keep an education affordable to students at Tennessee Tech, to make it accessible. And so in what you're looking at today as a board, there is no tuition and fee increase being proposed for continuing students, for returning students to Tennessee Tech. We are not increasing tuition and fees despite the financial challenges that we currently face. We feel like we can manage those without doing a tuition and fee increase, and that's really important. And we're, we're making that positive statement to our students that we want to support you and make, make your education affordable. I'm also taking a step to, to, to link the entire university together to a greater extent in, in our core mission, and that's education. So I'm asking, I've been asking the entire cabinet, all vice presidents on the cabinet, everyone that's academically qualified among the senior staff to teach a class this next year. And that includes me. So for any of you that are interested and just want to get into a chemistry class, I'll be teaching. So if you, if you want to join in, I'd be glad to enroll you in, in that class. But it's a way to, to keep us all connected and make sure that we all understand what we're here for. And that's to educate students and to support them. So I'm looking forward to getting back in the classroom myself. And I'm anxious to see how the rest of the cabinet responds as well. Capital projects will continue. The, we, we have two new buildings coming online. The new Student Recreation and Fitness Center will be opening in just the next couple of weeks. The new Science Building partially will be used this fall. The rest of it will be open later this fall. The Engineering Building remains under design, full design. So that design process is moving along at a, at a very good pace. I saw some recent plans for that. And it's very exciting to see that building begin to take, take shape. The, the Plaza on the west end of the Roden University Center is under construction currently. So a new outdoor space for students to enjoy this fall with a, with a fire pit and outside seating available for eating and, and recreation. We'll be replacing the cupola on the top of Dairy Berry Hall, which is in desperate need of repair. And we will continue to work on the roads around campus as, as these buildings come back online. It gives us the opportunity to then turn attention to some of the, the road and parking lot infrastructure that's in need of help. We also are, are going to be helping out the football office situation. The football coaches have been living in, in less than adequate conditions underneath the stadium. It's been impossible to keep that space dry for them. So we're in the process of utilizing on a, on a semi-temporary basis, some portable trailer facilities for offices. This is a very cost-effective way of handling this situation. It costs less than a hundred dollars a square foot and, and give us an opportunity then to either reuse those facilities for, for other purposes, once we have better accommodations for football staff or to resell them and, and recapture some of that investment. Enrollment has continued to be a significant focus for all of us. We're happy to report that summer school enrollment is actually up about 5% year over year, which is a very healthy sign. A lot of the enrollment for fall semester is still being determined because we've had to defer orientation sessions for incoming freshmen. And with K-12 schools and, and community colleges shutting down in the spring semester, a lot of those last minute recruiting efforts were, had to be postponed. And so the numbers are, are actually looking fairly encouraging right now. But we're still waiting to see how that comes about. So there's a lot of variables involved in enrollment for the fall that we're trying to protect against. Career placement has been a major emphasis on our efforts in the last couple of years in particular. On a good side, there was, I would have said career placement was booming before the pandemic hit and the economic shutdowns occurred. We were having record numbers of employers coming to campus in all academic areas. And we also implemented an improved collection of, of data to, to determine where graduates go as a first destination once they complete their degree. So work continues there. Obviously, it's having to adjust to the current situation. But I think the prospects for the future are still quite excellent. I don't know that I need to say much more about Rural Reimagine. The students said it so well a few moments ago. It's going very strong. The student group has continued to meet, as has been reported. And they're doing a fantastic job. And, and I think their efforts are going to exceed any of our, you know, expectations or even dreams as this thing started. We are developing partner communities with some of our rural areas surrounding us. In particular, Jackson County and, and Clay County have both agreed to enter into partnerships with us. And we're just waiting on the formality of signing those memos of understanding, hopefully in the near future. Research has been a continuing focus. As, as noted, we will be anticipating Dr. Taylor joining us as the new vice president for research later this summer. But this has actually been another really good year for research funding and progress on campus. Despite the shutdown and the pandemic, the interruptions from the pandemic, this campus has, has already submitted a record number of proposals to funding agencies in the approximate number of 190 proposals. That's, that's about close to 15% increase over last year in the number of proposals that have been submitted from the campus. So the faculty have been very active. And to date, you may remember that last year we hit a record number of, of dollars awarded in research grants of just over $20 million. Actually, we are knocking on the door of that same number. Currently, we're right at $20 million now in awards already provided with the, about a week left in this fiscal year. So there's still a chance that we might even reach last year's number despite the challenges that we faced over the last few months. Obviously, online education has been a big component, particularly this year. We were pushing on those areas anyway. Because of the shift at the end of the spring semester, we had to convert a lot of things to online. And I think it's expedited and, and really streamlined that progress in many ways. We expect for this fall to see an increase. It's not a huge increase, but it's significant nonetheless. Increase to about nine or 10% of our courses will be online this fall. That's up from about 6% or 7% last year. And we're also seeing a lot of additional work in scheduling of hybrid courses. And most of you know what I'm talking about. That's a, that's a course that's partially online and, and partially in person. And the hy, number of hybrid courses this, this fall is estimated to be about 19%. And previously, we had very few hybrid classes. So a lot of movement, a lot of progress being made in the online space as well. Great compliments to the faculty in that regard. The one area that I'm less satisfied in this year in progress is, is the project being proposed with a public-private partnership around a residence hall project. And quite honestly, we have, we have made some attempts. We've, we've talked to a, a number of private developers. We haven't found the right partner yet. We continue to explore that. And with the, the recent challenges over the last few months, it's just not been possible to pursue that at great length. So that is an area that we still are very interested in and want to, want to push as quickly as possible. But we're just not quite there yet. So there is a lot that's been going on, a lot to talk about, but a lot of challenges. And so I'm going to close with another quote. This one actually from President Dairy Berry. And if you notice the, the date there, this is the, this is December 8th of 1941. This is the day after the attack on Pearl Harbor. And at that point in time, President Dairy Berry addressed the faculty and said, "We must not, in this moment of tension and crisis and excitement, lose sight of the long-range view. We must realize that education must continue. And I think we can advise our students in such a vein and help them in their present thinking. We, I think, can best follow our belief in what we are fighting for by sticking by our job." You know, I think that was obviously true then. I think that's still true today for us at Tennessee Tech. We will stick by our job. We will stick by our job. We will work with students. We will put their interests first always, and we will continue to do a great job. So I want to thank the board for your support, and I'll be glad to answer any questions about what's going on right now.
Thank you, Dr. Oldham. That was a remarkable report, and you have had quite a year. Do other, do any board members have comments or questions for Dr. Oldham?
Just wanted to comment briefly. I really appreciated your comments at the beginning. I think in a time of social strife, one of the things that comes to mind is I think that my, social issues arise out of ignorance. And we, we don't trust and we fear what we don't understand. And so to me, one of the most important things that a university can do is to, to generate understanding. And, and you have to have diversity in your university and in your university culture in order to do that. You know, we can teach engineering and nursing and all these subjects all day long. But if we do not educate our students in a, in a more humane social attitude, we are failing them. And so I, I truly appreciate your comments. And I think as a board and as a university, we have to continue to focus on this even more now than, than ever before. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I, I couldn't agree more.
Phil, Phil and Trudy and Tom, I think that's so appropriate. Remind me of what Dr. King had said a while back, which is injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. I think it's our responsibility, all of us, every one of us, to fight the injustice of the racial inequality we need. And we need to do it now. We need to do it together. And so I'm glad, Phil, that you're taking the leadership and, and making sure that all our colleagues, all our students feel it and experience it in our, in our university. We can't look the other way anymore. We need to do it. We need to right the wrongs of the past. We need to, and we need to do it together. So thank you for taking the leadership.
Thank you.
And I particularly appreciate the fact that you're meeting face to face with students and listening to their individual experiences and concerns. That's, there's no substitute for that because it's not a group thing. This is not happening to a whole group of people. It's happening individually to individual people, and it's happening from individual people. So thank you for doing that, and thanks to you all for providing support for that. Is there anything else for the president? These are, I, I sat in on the president's, I did a kind of a, I don't know what you called it, a, a group meeting with the president's club, which are the, I guess, the larger donors. And, and he did a Zoom call, and I listened in on that. And to a person, everybody that commented said, "Boy, you sure have a hard job." So I thought that was really good, and I think he does. And I think we are very blessed to have him and to have you, Phil. I shouldn't be talking about you like you're not here, but thank you. And you will be getting your request for a review. Don't forget.
Thank you, Trudy. And, and let me just say, it, it is a challenging job, but I, we have a wonderful faculty and staff at Tennessee Tech that do remarkable work. And, you know, it's not me, it's them. So credit, credit goes to them. They've done a wonderful job.
And credit does go to them and to you. Not to disagree with you, but I do. So next on the agenda, unless anyone has any other comments for the president, hearing none. The next thing on the agenda, and by the way, my, my, my counterparts this morning with the chairs of the committees did a great job, and I'm doing a terrible job of keeping us on track today. But we've got a lot of important things to cover. The next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. And there are three items on the consent agenda that we dealt with this morning. Two items from the Audit and Business Committee, the tenure recommendations and the president's Ameritai contracts. And then one item from the Academic and Student Affairs Committee, which is T T U Policy 1204 on institutional scholarships. By definition, a consent agenda is one that we can take up without discussion. And so I would like to entertain a motion with respect to the consent agenda.
So moved.
So you're moving to approve all the items on the consent agenda, Perna?
Please.
Yes, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Chairman Harper.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all, oh, call, roll call. Jones.
Hi.
Lowry.
Hi.
Parte.
Hi.
Rose.
Hi.
Segarty.
Hi.
Stites.
Hi.
Ben Hauser.
Hi.
Will Moore.
Hi.
Harper.
Hi.
Nine eyes. That motion carries, so those items are all three approved. Next, we have the report from the Academic and Student Affairs Committee, and Ms. Rose will give us that report. And I think we have a couple of action items.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Harper. First, I would say that we heard several good reports during our meeting today. President Oldham and Provost Bruce, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Owens all provided updates regarding Tech's response to COVID-19. They shared details regarding the plans for safely reintroducing the faculty and staff and students to campus, as well as measures being taken to ensure that we have a quality, the best possible learning environment for our students. The reports focused on three specific areas of student affairs in enrollment and academic affairs. As far as student affairs was concerned, we heard reports on fall housing, on the counseling center, health services, specifically on the COVID-19 testing capabilities that we'll have at Tech, the new student recreation center. As far as enrollment management, we heard how indicators are that our domestic enrollment will be similar to what it was last fall, but we are expecting to see a decline in our international student enrollment. As far as the academic affairs, we heard about three areas within the academic area where task force have been established to put in place plans and procedures to ensure academic success and, and personal well-being despite what's going on with COVID-19. Those, those five areas are specific to hybrid courses that President Oldham just talked about. Our large section, social distancing. We also heard about the task force for pedestrian flow, policy procedures, and student success. And I might mention, there are other task forces that are non, non-academic in nature, but those are the ones that are academic in nature. Then we also heard about some academic program updates. Provost Bruce shared with us several updates regarding new academic minors, concentration certificates. And she highlighted two particular items. The Department of Decision Science and Management converted a concentration to a major in business information technology. And the Department of Curriculum and Instruction created a new graduate level certificate and licensure endorsement for computer science, which is the first licensure program of its kind in Tennessee, which is something we're very proud of. And so with that, we also adopted a couple of motions that are going to be before the full committee. So Chairman Harper, that's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. And so I think the next item is for you to propose the new academic program for, for a master's in science and community health and nutrition.
Yes, I so move. The, the committee voted to send it to the full board, the new academic program with a master's of science in community health and nutrition. And I so move.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, before I even entertain the motion, and I will, your motion stands, but, and I don't need a second because it came from the committee, but just by way of background, the purpose of this degree program is to provide advanced content knowledge in rural community health for credentialed nutrition and dietetics professionals who seek a graduate degree, as well as undergraduate dietetics students who seek to achieve registered dietitian nutritionist certification combined with a graduate degree. So Ms. Rose has made the motion to approve this proposal. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then I'll have, I'm sorry.
I'll second, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Lowry. Ms. Carpenter, can you give us a roll call vote? Jones.
Hi.
Lowry.
Hi.
Parte.
Hi.
Rose.
Hi.
Segarty.
Hi.
Stites.
Say it again, say it again.
Hi.
Ben Hauser.
Hi.
Will Moore.
Hi.
Harper.
Hi.
Nine eyes. Thank you. That motion carries, and that, that program is approved. And Ms. Rose, do you want to give us the background on the, the emergency student conduct rule?
Yes, on May 6th of 2020, the U.S. Department of Education published its final regulations related to Title IX sex discrimination and sexual harassment procedures. These new regulations, which go into effect August 14th, 2020, will make substantial changes to the procedures and processes used by institutions to address sexual harassment. This new federal regulation necessitates further revisions to the previously approved student conduct rule. The student conduct rule is revised to remove residences or references to sexual harassment or sexual misconduct that fall within the scope of Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 and Tennessee Tech Policy 302 on student conduct is revised to reflect those changes in the rule. So Title IX matters will be addressed in a, in a separate rule. Tennessee Tech must file emergency rules in order to comply with the Title IX final regulations before the implementation deadline, August 14th, 2020. So with that, Chairman Harper, upon the recommendation of the committee, I move the board approve Tennessee Tech University Emergency Student Conduct Rule 0240-0901, Student Conduct and T T U Policy 302, Student Conduct as, as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. And before I ask for discussion, I want to just make sure, I don't know that we said this in the committee meetings this morning, but I want folks who are listening in or watching to know that the board had an education session a few weeks ago where we spent a couple of hours learning about Title IX in its current state and Title IX as it's proposed and what those, what the implications are for Tennessee Tech. So we had a great deal of background discussion about this a few weeks ago, so we were better prepared for this discussion today. So Ms. Rose has made a recommendation. Is there any discussion about the emergency student conduct rule 0240-09-01 or T T U Policy 302? Hearing no discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote. Jones.
Hi.
Lowry.
Hi.
Parte.
Hi.
Rose.
Hi.
Segarty.
Hi.
Stites.
Hi.
Ben Hauser.
Hi.
Will Moore.
Hi.
Harper.
Hi.
Nine eyes. Thank you. That motion carries, and thank you, Ms. Rose. That was an excellent report. Mr. Stites, you're next on the agenda with your report from the, from the Audit and Business Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The summary that I was discussing this morning, Audit and Business Committee meeting, there were four items, none of which require any action on by the board. The first is the federal care is funding and auxiliary income. The Audit and Business Committee discussed the care is funding received by the university. The university receives funds from both 1804A1 and 1804A2. Fifty percent of 1804A1 is designated for emergency financial aid grants for students. 6,991 students have already received a total of $3,730,664. The other funds are designated to assist the university with costs associated with changes in instructional delivery due to COVID-19. Tech used $3,260,798 to provide refunds of housing and meal plans to students. Item number two involved endowments and bond financing. The university is closely watching the performance of these endowments as the market is quite volatile. Endowments are assets of the Tennessee Tech Foundation that provide scholarships to students and support for the academic programs of the university. The university also borrows funds to, to construct buildings and other assets for auxiliary enterprise activities such as housing, recreation center, and parking and transportation. Most of the university's debt was bonded fall of 2019 at very good rates. The university has only one small project still under short-term capital funding. I think I remember those good rates were something less than 2%, which is good. The third item, state budget, university's new state appropriation for fiscal year 2021 has been reduced to zero. The capital outlay for the new engineering building has been removed from the state's budget, and funds for capital maintenance project has been significantly reduced. Although that didn't sound very good, we did have good report that we're making progress on our budget. Item number four, faculty promotions. Provost Bruce shared decisions and supporting documentation regarding promotions for eligible faculty members with the board. Fifteen faculty members are awarded promotions beginning August 2020. The percentage of total faculty being awarded promotions is 3%. This was an informational item presented separate from the tenure recommendations, which were addressed on the consent agenda. And finally, the recommendations for the regular agenda are number one, the estimated 19, 2019 and 20 estimated budget and the 2020-21 proposed budget. I call upon the committee, upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board approve the 2019-20 estimated budget and the fiscal year 2020-21 proposed budget. I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Stites. We had extensive discussion about this this morning in our finance committee. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the motion? Again, I don't think I need a second because it's coming from the committee. So any comments or discussion? Very good. Then we will take a roll call vote. Jones.
Hi.
Lowry.
Hi.
Parte.
Hi.
Rose.
Hi.
Segarty.
Hi.
Stites.
Hi.
Ben Hauser.
Hi.
Will Moore.
Hi.
Harper.
Hi.
Nine eyes. Thank you. That motion carries. Ms. Stites, I think you have at least, you have two more items, I guess.
Yes, I do. It's disclosed projects for fiscal year 2020-21. Three of them are campus signage and wayfinding, data center fire suppression, and the football offices. A summary is that the, the first item is installing ceremonial gates at the main entrance points to campus and entry markers as secondary entry points, including building, streets, and wayfinding signage. Finally, we're going to install a fire suppression system for the data center in Clement Hall and purchase and install a prefabricated portable office building for the football program. Do we all, do we have to approve all of these?
I think we can do them all in one motion.
Do we have to?
Yes. I mean, we don't have to do it all in one motion, but we do need to approve them.
Right. I'd like to put items A and B up for. up for approval of the board at this time, campus signage and wayfinding, and data center fire suppression.
Can I make a suggestion, Chair Harper? Because rather than trying to, I would suggest we take these individually.
That's fine.
That you do them one at a time, that way we can discuss each one. I'm sorry, John, I didn't mean to interrupt, but rather than lump them and mix and match, just do it one at a time.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, Mr. Jones. I didn't mean to step over you either. Mr. Stites, if you'll accept that amendment, then we could just, if you would amend yours, your motion to just deal with campus signage and wayfinding.
I will happily amend my motion to deal with only campus signage and wayfinding.
Okay, and again, I don't think we need a second because the committee voted on this this morning. So is there discussion on the vote, on the motion rather, to approve the disclosed projects for campus signage and wayfinding?
I just want to make a comment about it. I, I'm torn because at a time when budgets are really, and I'm not saying it's not needed. I think that the campus certainly needs that. But at a time when budgets are really tight and we have suspended salaries increases, I think that's something that we could live another year without. It's $450,000. I guess I'm just asking, Clarie or Dr. Oldham, convince me otherwise.
So Tom, the total project, which will be implemented over more than one year, is the $490,000. The first phase of it, which is the main entrance gate located on Willow and Seventh Avenue, is, would be something that we would be moving on this year as we open up the new recreation and fitness center. And the estimated cost on that is actually $190,000.
Yeah, so let me, let me just add. Yeah, this would be done over multiple years. It would take us more than one year to do this. And I think Clarie may have mentioned this earlier in the morning, but of all the, all the surveys that are done routinely about why students select a particular institution to attend as their college choice, campus environment is, is almost always the number one indicator among students about why they choose a campus to attend. And so the look of the campus, the feel of the campus is really, it's more than just an aesthetic. It's a strategic issue for us. Now, we're clearly putting a lot of investment into built infrastructure on campus with new buildings. You know, the signage and really demarking the campus from the surrounding community becomes a very important component in that. You know, to your question, Trustee Jones, could we do another year without it? Yeah, we, you know, obviously we could. But it's important that we move on these projects as we have opportunity. And, and I personally think that this is one of those areas where even in, maybe in times of, of a little bit of stress, it's, it's the very time to invest in the future of the institution. And maybe this seems like an odd place to invest, but, but it is important to, to put our flag out there and let people see who we are.
Thank you, Dr. Oldham. Is there any further?
Chairman Harper, if I might say a word too, just from the standpoint of our extremely high ambitions for private gift support to my colleagues' point and President Oldham, having a defined campus that makes a statement when we host donors to what is ultimately our best home court advantage is only going to help us reach those aspirations.
A great point, thank you.
Phil, Phil, and Trudy, I think we as a board should give Phil the approval and give him the flexibility to figure out when he spends it, how he spends it. And because ultimately, the curb appeal of the university is absolutely critical, and none of us are disagreeing with that. I'd like to give Phil the authority to make the right decision on it.
Thank you, Perna, I think that's right. Are there any other, is there any other discussion? You're all great comments.
Chairman Harper?
Yes, sir.
If, if, if I might, I, I think we've got to remember who we're here for, and it's the students. And while it is important that we keep in mind what it costs to run this university, it's also important that we keep in mind that when a student and the parents come to this campus, we don't want them to feel like they're not welcome or that they're lost or nobody's making an effort to get them where they need to go. And then I fear it will make many students feel foolish if they can't find their way around the campus, particularly if they're with their parents. So I think it's.
A great comment, Johnny. I, I remember my own experience, and I was the kid from rural Tennessee, so I know exactly what you mean, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's a great comment. Are there others?
Chairman Harper, I just want to offer a, and, and let me know if it ends up coming off not, but this is a little bit of a humorous take on the deliberations that we're making here. I would be proud to offer driving directions to people visiting campus by saying, turn right at the light at Tennessee Tech, instead of saying, turn right off of Willow at Pizza Hut. So I like pizza, but I would be proud to say, turn right at Tennessee Tech.
I think that's a great point, Dr. Pardue, thank you. There other comments?
I don't know, I, I think all the students today don't ever look up at signs because they're looking at their phone, and their phone's telling them where to go.
That may be right. I do, I do strongly though agree that I think that a centerpiece for the university, this new fitness center is such a centerpiece for this university. I want to be sure it's highlighted as best it can be. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the, the disclosed project for campus signage and wayfinding. So Ms. Carpenter, I'd ask you to give us a roll call vote. Jones?
No.
Lowery?
Aye.
Pardue?
Aye.
Rose?
Aye.
Gerty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Ben Hoosier?
Aye.
Will Moore?
Aye.
Harper?
Aye.
Have eight ayes, one nay. Thank you, that motion carries. And I want to thank Tom though for your, for your comments because I think you're, you're focusing us the right direction. And I think my personal opinion wasn't, I didn't necessarily agree with your comments, but I, but I very much appreciate your sentiment that we've got to be sure that in these tough times, we're spending our money correctly. With that in mind, Mr. Stites.
Chairman Harper, if I could, because I want to echo that statement as well with Tom's comments. And I, I just want him and all the other trustees to know, these are decisions that we do not take lightly. We, we really think about these things, and we, we do try to prioritize these in a way that we think are in the best interest of the campus as a whole and the students. And, and I'm not saying we always get it right though, and that's why I appreciate the comments and, and you know, the, the review that you guys put on it.
Thank you. So next, Mr. Mr. Stites, you want to make a motion about the data center fire suppression?
Yes, ma'am, upon the recommendation of the committee, I move that we approve the data center fire suppression system in Clement Hall.
Thank you, we don't need a second. Is there any discussion on that?
I like this one.
You and I were in school at the same time, and we remember the main, well, I remember the mainframe. I don't know, you were younger than me, but we were there. And I remember the mainframe at Clement Hall with the cards. I don't know if you do, but anyway, I, I wanted it to burn down, just to be honest with you, but.
I remember it, Trudy, I was on with you.
Very, thank you. I'm sorry to digress. Is there any discussion about the fire suppression for the data center? Hearing none, Ms. Carpenter will take a roll call vote. Jones?
Aye.
Lowery?
Aye.
Pardue?
Aye.
Rose?
Aye.
Gerty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Ben Hoosier?
Aye.
Will Moore?
Aye.
Harper?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you, that motion carries. And thank you again for the validation, Captain Willmore, I appreciate that. And now, Mr. Stites, would you like to make a motion on the, the committee's recommendation on the football offices?
The committee did recommend that we approve the football offices, a prefabricated portable office building for the football program. I came to good conscience making that motion myself because of two reasons. One is, it doesn't, it's not consistent with the architecture of our campus, our entire campus. And number two is, it's going to be in a very visible part of our campus. It's not going to be out on the western edge. It may right at the middle of the football stadium. And I think it just sends the wrong message. We've got these three great new buildings we're going to have. We've got a set of trailers out here for football people. They didn't say something bad about our football program. So the committee voted to do this, but I'll make the motion, but I'm not going to vote for it.
So that's fine, you don't need to vote for it, but, but we do need a motion from the committee. So would you like to make the motion, or would you like someone else to make it?
I said I'd make the motion.
Okay, so your motion is to approve the disclosed project for fiscal year 2020, 2021 for the temporary football offices?
That's what.
Not temporary, excuse me, not temporary, prefabricated portable offices for the football program. Thank you.
That's it.
All right.
It's okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, you're going to ask some discussion, I'll wait.
Finish the administrative part of this, which is, I appreciate that motion from Mr. Stites, and we don't need a second. So now we will have discussion. And Captain Willmore, if you have something to offer, I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, I'd just love to hear from President Oldham, or maybe Mark Wilson, if he's available, on what other options you considered, and I guess why you came to this as being the best.
Yeah, I'll start, Mark, and if you want to add in anything you can. So this is a, this is an issue we've been struggling with for quite a while. And quite honestly, we've, we've looked at multiple options about trying to identify existing space on campus that's already present, that we could utilize. Nothing there seemed to work out. The, the cost of, of building new space for the football program is beyond our reach at this point in time because of limitations in funding sources that are appropriate for that kind of project. This is not a final solution by any means, but we have a situation where we have, we have employees, coaches in this case, actually sitting in space that almost any time it rains, water comes in their office. It's just, it's just totally unacceptable, and we've got to do something about it. We felt like, although this is not the ideal solution in any of our minds, whether you're talking about architecture or anything else, it is, it is by far the most cost-effective way of dealing with the problem immediately. And so that's where we landed. And, but this is a work in progress, there's no question about it. Mark, do you want to add anything to that?
So, so yes, I would, and I understand the aesthetic part of it. But if you look at Tucker Stadium as a whole, Tucker Stadium is the one building on our campus that does not fit with the architecture of our campus and the beauty of our campus. And that's with our fundraising plan for improvement. Two Tucker Stadium is something that we want to address and have red brick and, you know, white columns and, and sandstone accents. That's very important to us that the stadium fits with the total attractiveness. And, but I think this short-term solution, temporary solution, will put our football coaches in a much better environment for coaching, for recruiting, and the efficiency of the staff.
Do you have any idea, you say short-term, what does that really mean? I mean, and will it not be corrected until there's an entire stadium renovation, which could be many years away and many, many millions?
That's a great question. You know, I don't think I can really define short-term, but it's not what we, what I would consider a permanent home. We do need to fundraise. We have a plan in place to be able to do that, and we're looking at modifying those plans and looking at every alternative that we can because Tucker Stadium needs significant work for us to support a competitive Division I football program.
And, and Tom, to that matter, you know, fairly recently, we've, we've made a decision to kind of separate the football operations facilities project from the, the entire stadium project. So it is possible that, it's, it's a smaller number. It's still out of our reach right now, but it's a smaller number that, that is possible within the next few years to, to construct a new football operations office complex.
And I assume this stipulation to only use these funds, or specific funds, for, for these purposes, it's a state mandated? I guess it's mandated by the state.
Yeah, we, we are unable to use state funds to, for any kind of building project for auxiliary services, self-funding aspects of the campus and athletics is, is considered in that category. So there, there's no state funds available for us to try to address the issues at hand.
Maybe you can cover up those buildings with a big sign.
So, so as long as you're, as long as you're being snarky, may I suggest that those of us who want this football stadium to look like the rest of the campus could put the money in to make the football stadium look like the rest of the campus. Do I hear an amen, Dr. Braswell or Mr. Wilson?
Amen.
Yeah. I would say, man, I would also, I would also say at least, you know, I think the, the lack of, when you talk about signage and recruiting, the football, the way the football stadium looks today or the offices is a recruiting impediment. I don't think they even bring recruits down there today. I'm not saying that the temporary build is going to be much better, but, but at least there won't be rain in, in the coach's office. But I do have a question though. Dr. Oldham, you mentioned that, that you moved the operations out of the full stadium project. What, what would that cost? Just give me a range, and it's not, where you think the football operations improvements might be from a cost standpoint?
Uh, you know, we've, we haven't had a full look, a cost estimate of that, but I, Mark, what were we estimating, somewhere in the $10 million range?
Yeah, $10 to $15 million just on team operations part. So that's just locker rooms, equipment, coaches' offices, team meeting rooms and such.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Curious, long-term, to renovate the whole stadium, is that a tear down, or is that a remodel, or what, what is that?
Tom, we have, we did have a analysis done by Herry. They're the group that had done work at Austin Peay. And they were actually recommended that we do a complete tear down. There's such degradation of, of the whole structure with the water penetration that's been going on for years. When I arrived on campus in 2004, Tucker Stadium was an issue, continues to be an issue today. And we continue to put money into it, and you're probably putting, you know, good money into a, into a bad facility. So right now, we do have a plan to tear down one side, and, and that's what we need to build a fundraiser for and secure funding for.
The tear down of one side outside of just the office space, what, what kind of ballpark are you talking? Well, maybe even all of it, if you're going to do the whole thing. I'm just, just curious, not saying it's on the immediate horizon.
Herry, the one side that they said, and we have not had an updated quote in a matter of, of a few years now, was $45 million to do one side. But that included all the team facilities and everything underneath it because it was cost efficiencies and, in terms of building on top and using that space and that structure underneath, great efficiency in HVAC, HVAC systems, water, sewer, all those mechanical systems.
This is great discussion, and I'm glad we're having it. This is, this is a really good discussion. We, we've talked a couple of times, the president and I have, and about having a discussion with the board about the master plan. And we may want to do that, Phil, at some point in the next 12 months or so, and maybe put some price tag things on stuff so people understand what, what you think the priorities are and what the price tags are for those as we move forward, kind of how you see this going. I know it's all been part of the strategic plan as well, but I think it would be helpful to, I think it would be constructive for this conversation if we all had a better idea about the, the long-term master plan.
Yes, in fact, we're, we're in a master plan revision now. Gary Askew is the, is the lead architect on that master plan revision. Gary Askew is the, is the lead architect on that master plan revision, and I would anticipate that the board will have an opportunity to, to hear from Gary on that project, hopefully in, in just the next few months, anyway.
Terrific, thank you.
I, I fear that this temporary facility will turn into much longer than that. At Johnson Space Center, when I first arrived years ago, they had a Saturn V out in the open, and they built a temporary facility, it was going to be five years, that was 17 years ago, and that facility is still there. So I know how these things can morph into something that's not desired. So I would hope that we would, we would revisit this if we go forward with this soon, and make plans to have a more long-term solution and steps to do so.
Absolutely, Barry, that is our intent. I, I don't want this to be permanent at all.
And I think we, I think we all agree with that, and we certainly aren't voting on that today, but I think that's everybody's sentiment, at least that's what I'm hearing.
Thank you for your comments on that, Barry.
Madam Chair, I want to add just quickly that the $3 million that incidentally was still a part of the budget that was passed for engineering was years and years in the making. Probably five years ago, the president said, "What if?", and cast a vision, and that came to fruition. He cast a vision here several years ago relative to the stadium, and I can't say enough about the president and Mark Wilson and the efforts that they have, they have pursued this energetically and with a sense of urgency. So Captain Willmore, I'm very confident that this won't be a long-term proposition, there's just too much burning desire to get it done.
That's very encouraging, I appreciate that, Kevin.
Excellent comments from everyone. We do have a motion on the table, and the motion is to approve the, it was on the committee's recommendation to approve the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 disclosed project for football offices. This is prefabricated portable office buildings for the football program. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Carpenter, I'll ask you to take a roll call vote.
Jones?
I'm, I'm not really voting for the offices, I'm, I'm voting for the football staff. I mean, I know we don't want to quantify our votes here, but the other thing is, if we make it ugly enough, maybe they'll redo the whole thing sooner. So I vote yes.
Lowry?
Aye.
Carde?
Aye.
Rose?
Aye.
Segarty?
Aye.
Stites?
No.
Just to make sure, you're a little bit muffled, was that a nay?
No, no, nada.
He's, he's voting against.
Van Hooser?
Aye.
Willmore?
I'll also emphasize that my vote yes is for the staff.
Harper?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one, one no.
Thank you, that motion carries. And again, I appreciate people offering alternative positions on these things and qualifying positions, even on their positive votes, I appreciate that a lot. Mr. Stites, I believe you have the next item, which is the review and approval of the fiscal year 2021 to 22 capital budget request.
Yes, Madam Chairman, upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board to approve the 2122 capital budget request.
Thank you, and we had considerable discussion about this in the, in the committee meeting this morning as well, and since it's coming from a committee, we don't need a second. Is there discussion on the capital budget request? Hearing none. Ms. Carpenter, I'll ask you to take a roll call vote.
Jones?
Aye.
Lowry?
Aye.
Carde?
Aye.
Rose?
Aye.
Segarty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Van Hooser?
Aye.
Willmore?
Aye.
Harper?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
For, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
As the TCU emergency rule 0240-09-08 Title IX compliance and TCU policy 144 Title IX policy and grievance procedures, the board held an informational meeting about this, as you mentioned earlier, on June 2nd, where we spent a good bit of time talking about the Title IX regulations and provided background and context for the Tennessee Tech Title IX rule that the board's considering today. On May the 6th, 2020, US Department of Education published its final regulations related to Title IX sex discrimination and sexual harassment procedures, and these new regulations, which go into effect August 14, 2020, make substantial changes to the procedures and processes used by institutions to address sexual harassment. Surprise, surprise. An emergency rule is necessary to ensure the rule is in effect by August 14. TCU policy 144 Title IX policy and grievance procedures reflects the TCU Title IX rule replacements and provides additional details as required by the federal regulations. Upon the budget audit committee's recommendation, I move the board to approve the TCU emergency rule 0240-090-08 Title IX compliance and TCU policy 144 Title IX policy and grievance procedures as presented and revised.
Just presented, correct? I don't think we made any revisions. Is that correct?
There were no, there were no revisions.
No revisions, so it's just as presented.
As presented.
Thank you, Mr. Stites. Is there any discussion on this? It's a very important policy, and... Any discussion? All right, Ms. Carpenter, we'll take a roll call vote.
Jones?
Aye.
Lowry?
Aye.
Carde?
Aye.
Rose?
Aye.
Segarty?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Van Hooser?
Aye.
Willmore?
Aye.
Harper?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. So that motion carries. And I'm going to use the chairman's privilege here and move other business up ahead of item 9B5, Mr. Stites, if you'll allow me, I want to cover one, I, two items actually, before we get to the item, is the naming of the Student Recreation Center. Though, I'd like to cover two things under new biz, I mean, excuse me, under, under other business, and Mr., excuse me, Dr. Oldham, I believe you have a couple of items there, right? We'll start with, the first thing I want to do is address Mason Hilliard, our student trustee, who has been an exceptional student trustee. And Mason, I made some notes about a couple of things I want to say to you, and then I think Dr. Oldham has a little presentation to make. Mason, you're truly a remarkable young man. In a, in a university full of unique and extraordinary people, you manage to stand out. I recall meeting you the first time when you were an SGA greeter who met the board members at their cars and made sure that they found their way to the meeting room. Yes, we really do have those, and yes, we really do need those, and maybe we don't once we have signage, but anyway, they were the wayfinders for us at one time. I don't think that it was just the combination of your bright red hair against the vibrant purple of the uniform jacket that made you so memorable. You have a genuine sparkle, and the world needs more genuine sparkle. You have been an exceptional board member, you have represented the interests of your fellow students with honesty and clarity, and you have done so with the professionalism of a seasoned executive. I think that I speak for each of our trustees when I say that you're the kind of student that makes us proud that we are associated with Tennessee Tech. I understand that you've accepted a position here at Tennessee Tech as an admissions counselor, so congratulations to you on your new career, and congratulations to Dr. Johnson for hiring a superstar. I look forward to working with you, Mason, for many years to come. And Dr. Oldham, I think, has a presentation.
Yeah, I do. You know, one of the, the great benefits of being president at Tennessee Tech is to, is to get to know so many wonderful students, and, and I don't get to know all of them personally, like I would like to, but, but there are some that I do, and Mason is one of those individuals that Carrie and I have had the joy of getting to know personally. If you don't know, Mason comes from Greenfield, Tennessee, and some of you may not know where Greenfield is, if you don't know West Tennessee very well, but that's a stretch, we don't get too many students from that part of rural West Tennessee, and it's, it's been a real pleasure for Mason to come to Tennessee Tech. He's made a mark here, he's, he's made a great legacy, and I'm delighted that he's going to continue on. But, but today, we have a plaque for you, Mason, I wish I could hand it to you personally, we'll get it to you as soon as possible, but it reads, "With deep appreciation for your time, service, and dedication to Tennessee Tech University's Board of Trustees, Mason Hilliard, Student Trustee, 2019-2020." I'm sure you can find a great place in your, in your home for this, and I know you'll take great pride in it, but thank you for your service.
Let's give him a round of applause. A silent round of applause, Mason. Would you like to...
Yes, ma'am, I would. It's been a real honor to serve as a student trustee, like you said, our president, Oldham. I come from Greenfield, Tennessee, so coming here, I really wasn't sure how I would do in college, or if I would, I guess, fit in, but Tennessee Tech gave me a chance and welcomed me with open arms, and I'll be forever grateful. And like you said, trustee Harper, I will, my work here is not over, I'm excited to start traveling the state and recruiting for this wonderful place, and getting to work with everyone, especially the wonderful team and the undergrad, the Office of Undergraduate Admissions, you know, Dr. Johnson and directors are doing a great job, and we've got a lot in store, so I'm excited, but I wish Daniel, the, the new student trustee, the best of luck, and I want him to know that he can always call on me for questions or help, but thank you to each board member and President Oldham and every person at Tennessee Tech, it's been an honor, and I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mason, that was exceptional, if I knew how to hit the unmute button. Next, I have one other item, and she's not going to believe I actually managed to pull off something without her knowing about it, but Kay Carpenter is going to be retiring shortly, very soon, in just a matter of hours or days or something, right? She's, she's on mute, but I think she said right.
That is correct, depending on how everything works out, shorter or longer. By June 30th at the latest, though.
I'm sorry, what was that?
On June 30th at the latest.
Okay, that's what I thought. So I have a few comments to make about that, but first, I have to make the following statement. I agreed to chair this board with an understanding that you would be on the team. This was not what I counted on, and I am not happy about it. So, there's that.
Okay.
Now that I have that out of the way, Kay, I want to say congratulations on an exceptional career, not just here, but throughout your career. I've only worked with you for a few years, but I know that your body of work has influenced and enhanced each of the multiple organizations with which you've been involved. It is difficult for me to imagine any lawyer who has a broader scope of responsibilities than one who is working as the university council for a public university. And I started to try to quote a couple of the things that were on the extreme, and I decided I would probably offend someone, so I'm not going to. But yet, you seem to have a genuine gift for quickly getting to the heart of every one of the vastly different issues that you're required to address. Your title of university counsel is very appropriate, because you're indeed a wonderful counselor. Your title of board secretary, though, is woefully inadequate to describe your responsibilities and burdens in shepherding this board. You've been a teacher, a disciplinarian, a cheerleader, and most importantly, a visionary thinker, as you've worked with Tom Jones and me to establish the protocols for this board. Your impact on this university will be a legacy of servant leadership, and it will continue long past the time that any of us are sitting around the table. Thank you for your leadership and friendship, and we hope you enjoy your retirement. And I think Phil has a presentation for you as well, one from the university and then one from the board, right?
I, I think actually both of these are from the board. We'll, we'll hold off on the university farewells till next week, Kay, so you, this is, this isn't the end of it. For those of you that know Kay, know that this is a very uncomfortable position for her, this is not, this is, she, she would probably prefer to climb under her desk right now.
I can just sit quietly, that is true.
But Kay, I, I can't express to you on a personal level how much I appreciate the work that you've done, and you've always done everything I ask of you. You came in at a time when we had never had a university council before, you, you took that charge of getting us up to speed in all matters of policy and, and legal status so that we were protecting ourselves going forward and, and making good decisions. You always provided wise counsel, and then everything changed on you, and we, we had to stand up a board, and you took on that additional role with, with a considerable amount of grace and, and professional capability, and has done an excellent job as board secretary. So on behalf of the board, the presentation is, first of all, a plaque with deep appreciation for your time, service, and dedication to Tennessee Tech University and Tennessee Tech University's Board of Trustees, Kay Carpenter, University Counsel, 2013 through 2020, and inaugural board secretary, 2017 through 2020. In addition, the, the board wants to present you, and I, I could drop the plaque, I better not drop this.
Don't drop that.
This is, this is a beautiful piece of crystal that has the, the university seal on it, and engraved Kay Carpenter, University Counsel and Board Secretary with sincere gratitude from the Board of Trustees, June 2020. So I know you'll find a great place for these somewhere in your home, and thanks for all that you've done, Kay, we're going to miss you.
Hey, I, that's an embarrassment of kind words and riches, thank you so much, it, it has been an honor. Pleasure to serve, I don't know so much, but it certainly has been an honor, but it would be remiss of me to take, to take those thanks without recognizing the group that is known as the Hive. The Hive would be the administrative support staff, the Office of Communications and Marketing, the IT individuals, everybody who works so hard to make everything go seamlessly so that you all can address the real issues, the important issues, and, and I will say, I'm, I'm, thank you again so much for your kind words, but I don't know that I have ever met a more generous group of individuals as the board members, both just capacious in spirit and generosity to the university of probably one of the most valuable assets that many of you, that you have, and that is time, and I am always amazed by your willingness to spend that on Tennessee Tech, and thank you for that.
Great job, yeah, thank you for your all the help.
Kay, just one comment, you promised we'd have a drink sometime just to celebrate your professional career. When we do that, I want you to bring that crystal and drink out of that, I want to see that.
Done.
That sounds like an old fraternity trick right there. All right, well, Kay, again, thank you, and Mason, we've said a lot of goodbyes today, we're saying, and it's obviously not final goodbye to any of these folks, but we've had such a great run with so many of you. We have one more item on the agenda that I know of, and unless somebody has anything else, I think it's time.
I do have one more thing, but I'll wait till after that, just save me a spot at the end.
You want to do it after the naming of the Student Recreation Center?
Whatever you want, Chair.
Why don't you go ahead and do it now, if you don't mind?
Just want to make a comment about the budget and these decisions that we make. I, I don't know what to say, except it troubles me a little bit. I do love our campus, I think it's beautiful, and I think investing in that environment is the right thing to do, but I wanted to make sure that we define the environment as much more than brick and mortar. Environment is student culture, it's diversity, it's the attitudes, it's everything, I mean, we, we are about the students, and the beautification of the campus is only a small part of that. And I, I would just urge Dr. Oldham that you and the staff and the faculty invest not only, you know, and, and I know you do, but, but just to reemphasize it, that we invest in the culture of Tennessee Tech, which means investing in our faculty, which means investing in the students. which means investing in our faculty, which means investing in the students and, and making sure that we care for all of them. One thing I struggle with sometimes is I think we do a very good job highlighting students. And, and I know we try to highlight faculty as well, but I, I worry that we're not giving raises because of budget. And please keep that in mind in your leadership and your direction of this university. That's all.
I couldn't agree more, Tom. And I, I regret, this is the, in, in eight years of being at Tennessee Tech, this is the first year we have not been able to give general salary increases to faculty. And I regret that. And we continue to make that a top priority.
And I think.
Thank you for that privilege, Chair.
I thank you certainly. And I, and I thank you both for those excellent comments. Are there other comments anyone would like to make before we get to the, to the final item on the agenda? So I think I would like to, if it's okay, I'd like to ask Dr. Oldham to, to set this up. And then I think we will, actually, I guess I'll ask Mr. Stites to make the motion about the naming of the Student Recreation Center. And then Dr. Oldham will give some background on that, I think, as well. Is that okay with you, Mr. Stites?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. It's with great emotion and pride and gratitude that Annapolis Committee's recommendation that I move the board to approve the naming of the new Student Recreation Center to the Mark L. Burnett Student Recreation and Fitness Center. Amen.
Thank you for that motion. Is, before he, before you proceed, Phil, is Mark L. Burnett on the phone? I don't, I saw him earlier and now I don't see his.
I'm here.
Where are you? Oh, there you are. You're in, you're incognito.
Yes.
All right. Would you proceed with the background on this motion, please?
I will be happy to. It is, it is a tremendous honor and great enthusiasm that I recommended this to the board for consideration. And that's the naming of the new Student Recreation and Fitness Center with Mark L. Burnett's name attached. Just to give a little background, I'll repeat from what I said earlier this morning. Mark has been a staple on this campus for over 35 years. I often referred to him as the heart and soul of Tennessee Tech because I think if you had to pick one person that embodies the spirit of Tennessee Tech, it would be Mark Burnett. For those of you that don't know him as well, Mark was extremely beneficial and, and a leader in helping get this building funded to begin with. He worked with the Student Government Association to pass a referendum to, to institute a fee, a student fee on themselves to pay for this building. And, and those students, great credit to those students because they passed that resolution on a fee increase knowing full well that they would be long graduated before the building was completed. And so they were definitely paying it forward to future generations of students. And it was largely through Mark's encouragement and leadership that, that got that done. So great kudos to him for that. Mark, as I said, he's, he served Tennessee Tech for 36 years in various capacities, culminating with many years as Vice President of Student Affairs. He, he was the first and only permanent vice pres- African American on this campus. He's helped to raise approximately $1.2 million for diversity scholarships to improve our diversity on campus. He was selected as the first Chief Diversity Officer at Tennessee Tech and give us counsel in that area. And as a side note, most of you know about Mark's athletic career. Mark was a five-time captain of the Tennessee Tech men's basketball team. He, he scored the first points in the Heath Redlin Center. I have to admit this, he actually shot free throws to score the first, first. But he, he did a good job getting fouled at first of the game anyway. And he sank the free throw, so good for him. But he's, he's, all of you know, Mark's an outstanding individual, a great credit to the campus and the community. And I can't think of any.
I, I have to add one thing to that, Dr. Oldham, and I don't have anything to add about Mark's career, but I will say that Dr. Oldham said to me five years or so ago, it was a year or two before I was asked by the governor to serve on this board. Phil Oldham said to me, I hope someday we can name this new recreation center the Mark Burnett Recreation Center. And I've had that in my mind ever since. So this was not a new idea. This wasn't something that just came along in the last week or two. And I have to tell you, Mark, every time I talk about it or think about it, I puddle up. So I'm not gonna say.
Don't do that. Don't do that.
But I know others will want to say things as well. Let me give the board members a chance to speak, but I also just want to tell you one more thing about protocol. After we take this vote, we're going to call ourselves adjourned and then we'll have a couple of minutes offline, but still on the Zoom call to be able to celebrate with Mark. So please feel free, anyone, to say anything to have to say publicly.
I just would say, while we're on the record, I think it's a great honor and testament to Mark's career and really for it to be, for, for Mark's impact on students. And he was always about students. He's always been about the students for him. And there are so many students like myself that wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for what Mark did for us. So, so you got me puzzled up over here as well. But that, that's on behalf of so many students that are not in the room today to say thank you and, and future students to get to, get to walk in that rec center, you know, because, because of your efforts. So thank you very much, Mark.
Now, I had to think about presence. If I came to the university 100 times after I graduated, at least 99 of those times, I saw Mark Burnett walking around campus. He was always out doing the job, day in and day out. And to be able to come to the campus now and still see something, and may not see him, but we'll see the Mark Burnett Building, that is, that's wonderful. And I'm, congratulations and well deserved.
I think what happens always, Trudy, is, is when people talk about legends and talk about making of history, that's what the university did today. And I'm so proud, Mark, that we managed to do it with you. So thank you for what you've done. And Phil and Trudy, it's just, I'm just moved and touched and, and I think this is remarkable. Well done, guys. Thank you.
I wanted to congratulate Mr. Burnett on this honor. I'm a better person today because of Mark Burnett and Tennessee Tech's a better place because of Mark Burnett. My mother always tells me, the first time we visited campus, she still remembers Mr. Mark Burnett and his love and passion for the students at this university. And he's one of the reasons why I've stayed in higher education and hope to make a career of it. And so he continues to inspire students every day. And I can't think of anyone more deserving than this. So I'm, I'm proud of him and he's a great asset to this university and a lot I got to know him.
Thanks, Mason.
Hey, Mark, this is Johnny Stites.
Hey, Johnny.
The thing that really impressed me about you is you haven't just been successful in education. You've been as successful as a father, as a husband, as a citizen. In every way, you've been successful. And to that, I take my hat off to you and, and grateful that God blessed us with you at this university and this community and for all the good things you've done for the people who live here, both in this community and in this country. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Mark is a prodigious fundraiser. Incredible. In fact, one little humorous thing I'll share is that in one of our meetings, he would disarm someone who is African American. The person would say something along the line of, well, Mark, you know, I really didn't have a good experience at Tennessee Tech. And Mark would look around their place of business or their home and said, "Well, you're having a good experience now, won't you help us out?"
I don't want to cut this short. If anyone else has anything to say, I hope they'll say it.
I just, I just want to add, Mark, anytime that I was walking around Tennessee Tech and I have the honor of working with so many wonderful people, it always brought a special spark when I, when I would see you and your smile. You, you really truly, in many ways, represent what joy in life is all about. And I'm so glad that we are, are celebrating you and celebrating the impact that you have had on so many lives in, in the naming of this building. So thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Sally.
Chairman Harper, Redonah, I just want to say, Mark, congratulations to you, very, very well deserved. And thank you for your many years of service to Tennessee Tech and, and great job, well deserved.
Thank you.
Mark, just briefly, completely agree with everything everyone else has said, but I just want to say, I've been in Cookeville most of my life and, and you've not only been a pillar of this university, but of the community as well. I'm a better person, this community is better, better for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
So I'm going to say, I'm going to say one thing I was going to say, but I think I'm going to say it because everybody's puddling up and I'm going to say something that's not such a puddle up. And that is, I watched a documentary one time about Dolly Parton and she told that her hometown put a statue of her in the middle of the square. And every so often, she, she'd go home and she'd find out her parents had been out there washing the bird poop off of the statue and sorting it up. And I don't know your mother, but I've heard stories about your mother. I'm thinking she may be out there polishing letters, right? Letters that say Mark L. Burnett. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote, Ms. Carpenter.
You probably had her hand up, Trudy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I know I'm a guest here, but I just wanted to say to Mark that the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers, I brought the students into your office and you made them feel so welcome that, you know, it just, it just lit their fire. So thank you, having had a lot of experience, but wow. You know, you just knocked it out of the park and, and I imagine a whole career like that. Well deserved that, that we're honoring you in this way.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there is one thing that should be mentioned before we go to vote and that is, I don't think I've ever met a Christian man who is more devoted to his wife than Mark Burnett. And I just really respect that.
And you will know, you won't get any argument from me about a man, a man being devoted to his wife, so.
Chairman Harper?
Yes.
I'm, I'm going to say a couple of words. I was gonna wait until after, but I, I want this to be recorded. We're in a very challenging time when it comes to racial injustice and civil unrest. And I, and I look at, I, I look across this screen and I see my, my brown face and I see Fred's brown face. And if it were not for Mark Burnett, we wouldn't be here. And so, Mark, obviously, I'm very emotional because a lot of my professional career I owe to you in opening the doors that you opened for me. But as Fred said before, it's, it's not just about me, it's not just about Fred. I've, I've spent more hours in that Black Cultural Center than anybody. And had it not been for you, people like Dr. Volpe, but you more importantly, we wouldn't have that space. And so the legacy of black folk at this institution in, in many ways owes itself to you. So I want, I want personally, thank you. And we'll, we'll do our other boo-hooing and stuff on the phone. I wanted this to be on record that I said these things about you and what you have done for African American people and black people at Tennessee Tech University. And in the midst of this time, I want to thank you, Dr. Oldham. And, and I'm glad you said it, Chairman Harper. This has been something that was thought about, not in response to what's going on in 2020. This was a stat, this, this idea came years ago. And so in a lot of ways, Tennessee Tech is doing something that I want to commend, that we won't even see many other institutions do. So, Dr. Oldham, thank you, sir. I'm, I, that's personal. Mark, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't want to call any into this until everybody's had a chance to speak.
Trudy, I should say something, I think, having known Mark the longest. I didn't speak because it's really hard for me, but Mark was a tall, skinny, black kid from Alcoa that gave Tennessee Tech a chance. And I was just a white kid from Cookeville, Tennessee. And we became friends and helped each other through journalism classes together. And I know it wasn't easy on him here then in the environment. And I know it's not easy for brown, black faces today at Tennessee Tech. But Mark has made it better. And of all the things you've done, I think that's a legacy that you can be proud of. And I know there's a difference. There is a difference in the hearts of many people, if not every person. You have changed many people. And so thank you for that. Thanks for being my friend back 43 years ago. And I remember cheering for Mark, I didn't know him yet, but when we beat Vanderbilt, I'll never leave that out of the story, when we beat Vanderbilt for those points. So, but thank you, Mark, so much for being my friend.
You're welcome.
Mark, this is Francis Guttenia and I just want to congratulate you on this recognition. Very personal friend. And when I was going through difficult times with the passing of my son, you and your wife brought comfort to me and I'm very, very appreciative of that. So this recognition is well deserved. At times, people see me and they say, "Are you Mark Burnett?" I say, "No." I mean, he's taller than I am, so I can't be Mark Burnett, so. I really want to congratulate you and for everything that you do for Tennessee Tech and you continue to do, because you're not leaving, right?
No comment.
Would anyone else like to say anything on the record? And again, we'll have a little time afterwards as well to, since we can't visit in person and hug his neck, I thought we'd at least close out the line with the live stream and we will continue to visit. Anybody else have anything else? Then, Ms. Carpenter, I'm going to ask you to call the roll call vote. Jones?
Hi.
Lowry?
Hi.
Carte?
Hi.
Rose?
Hi.
Segardy?
Hi.
Stites?
Hi.
And Hoosier?
Hi.
Willmore?
Hi.
Harper? An enthusiastic "I." That would be nine "I's," ma'am. And it is my great pleasure, and this makes me.
That's my wife back there.
But this is, it gives me great pleasure to announce that that motion carries and it will be the Mark L. Burnett Recreation Center.
Can you, can you hear me?
We can.
That was, that was my wife.
Mark, get Tammy to come up there in the picture, let everybody see.
And actually, let me do this. Have her come up in the picture and then if she can, can she get to?
Tammy, Tammy.
We're so proud of both. And I'm going to call us adjourned for purposes of the live stream. So I think that Chris or Kendrick or somebody's going to cut us off. Can you send us a text and tell us that we are no longer live?
Hey, Trudy, before you do, could I?
Oh, please.
Everybody, could I say something?
Please, yeah, I didn't let you talk, I'm sorry. That would have been, don't cut us off yet if you haven't already.
One, hello, everyone. I, I, I pride a lot, to be quite honest with you. And, and this is for Johnny, just a little bit of levity. And Johnny and I have known each other a long time. And this is for Johnny, just a little bit of levity. And Johnny and I have known each other a long time, and I really thank him for his words and his encouragement over the years. But when it first came up, and I went to think about it, I said, "Well, you know, I'm not a president. That's Dr. Oldham." I said, "I'm not a major donor yet," and that's coming. And I'm not deceased as a major donor, so. So there was no fourth category, but one of those I'll surely fit in here somewhere. It's an honor hard to absorb right now. I would say it's a dream come true, but the truth is, it's not. I didn't dream that large. My dreams were always amounted to being able to help students. Once I received a degree from Tennessee Tech University, that was the first dream. And the second dream was once becoming employed, and Mason, I know, will do well there, is that, you know, to serve the students and to do that in the best way possible. And the times we're in, I'm really hurt by things that are going on, because I never looked at a student and said, "I'm going to help this Black student today," or "I'm going to help this white student today." It was just, "I'm going to help someone today, if all possible. I'm going to help someone." And if it really, if I could change the world right now, if I could change the United States and what's going on relative diversity and racism and all those things, if it came down to saying no to the building being named for me, I would say no, if it would help something in that regard. And so I just feel so strong, because when I was growing up, and I won't take a lot of time, but I need to take a minute. When I was growing up, my grandfather, who grew up in 1940s Georgia, and saw a lot of things, a lot of atrocities relative to race, he said, "Never treat anyone without respect. Always treat everyone with respect and dignity." And pretty much they'll do the same. He said, "And if they don't, it's their problem." And so I learned that early on, and I'll relay a quick story. In 1977, when I came to Tennessee Tech University, a group of us athletes went to a local restaurant. Back then, there were not many, but we went to one. Late one night, after a function on campus, we walked. So it was fairly close. And we went to a function, and we went in, and to be quite honest, this gentleman was sitting there, and the waitress was there. And we walked in, and the waitress was very kind. We'd been there before, and so we got hamburgers and hot dogs and things before. And this voice says, "Who let those rug heads in here?" And we stopped, and a couple of the athletes were actually angry enough to want to do something. And we talked, and I said, "You know, guys, let's not do anything. Let's get our food, and let's leave, and let's do the right thing." But my grandfather told me, was from a heart, that people's hearts have to change. We can educate people. We can throw money at people. We can do a lot of things. But if the individual hearts don't change, it's a heart matter. And I think today, we're seeing that. It's a heart matter. The heart has to change. And so I learned then, at 18 years old, that there was one heart in the room that was full of hatred, maybe fear. There was another heart in the room that was just as kind and as open, and they looked alike. And so it gets down to individuals today. I think what we have to get, we have to get past our, you know, we have value systems, and we have all these things that we come up with and talk about our families and the past and all these things. I think we have to look at our hearts and say, you know, the harder right may be the thing to do, the easier wrong, but the harder right, we've got to do the harder right thing to do. And that may be changing our value systems relative to our family history, or whatever that means, that will bring us together. Hard decisions have to be made inside of us, each of us, in order to make these things work today, and I pray for that. But I thank God. I thank my family. I thank the board. Thank you guys so much. I don't feel deserving, to be quite honest. I thank Dr. Oldham, a friend and colleague, all the other presidents I've worked for, university committees, my Student Affairs folks, best people in the world, and I love them all. I miss them dearly. I thank David Mullinex and the people, particularly at the Fitness Center. Now, he did a lot of the groundwork for the things that we've done, so I give him credit. And then I thank our students. You know, without our students, a group of people that I love, I'm sitting in my daughter's office in her house. She's at work, and I'm sitting in her office, and on the wall is her BSN, MSN, in nursing from Tennessee Tech. There's nothing greater. I mean, there's nothing greater. I'm sitting here. I've got a gold shirt and black TTU shirt with TTU on the leg. It was everything. Other than God and family, Tennessee Tech has always been it for me, from day one. It just did so much to me that I couldn't help but want to do something for the people who came behind me. You could not help it. It was not an obligation. It was a service. It was from the heart. And, you know, one of my friends says, "That which comes from the heart touches the heart." And I think that's what we need today. We need people to check their hearts and see what's going on. So anyway, that's my spiel without crying. It's, I will always be Tennessee. I will always be purple and gold. If there's a color dimension today, I will always be purple and gold, and so will most of my family. And I have an 18-year-old great niece coming to Tennessee Tech this fall, from Alsine High School, Fred, in Knoxville. So how about that?
Well, Mark, I'm sorry I didn't offer you that opportunity, and I could have. So thank you. And you couldn't, I hope we caught those words. I know they're still being recorded in live streams. So I think some of that's got to be engraved somewhere on that building, because there were some great comments in what Mark just said. Anyone else? Mark, we love you and thank you. And Dr. Oldham, thank you for having the vision for this, all those years.
Well, sometimes things work out the way that they should. Appreciate everybody's support. Mark, just for the record, how many family members have you brought to Tennessee Tech?
Probably eight or nine have come. Some didn't finish now, but they arrived. But we got my wife, my wife's sister, my daughter. We have six degrees just in my family, just between Tammy and I and the kids. So we have six degrees just with us, and then her sister. And we have several family members. I had a nephew last year, have a niece this year, about eight or nine people so far. I always push Tennessee Tech first.
Well, I hope you all will join us as we stay on for a few more minutes and maybe talk about things that we didn't want recorded. But I think that this has been a great meeting, and I apologize for going long, but we had a whole lot of really important things to cover today. And not the least of which was this last one, which is one of the most important things we will do for generations to come. So I will call us adjourned now. And I think that Rick said we're still live a few minutes ago. Can you cut off our live stream and leave us still on?